Her meeting of Johnson County Council, meeting of March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call please. Here.
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 President. Here. Has she turned on yet? Melinda, if you're there can hear, speak up. Hi, Melinda.
Hi.
Ready for an invocation, please.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to give it. If everybody could bow their heads. Our Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful. To be together, we ask for a blessing in this meeting that level, cool heads will prevail. That we can address our county issues effectively and efficiently and with the taxpayers in mind. We ask for a blessing on our first responders and those in harm's way, that they might be kept safe. And we ask for these things, Father in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, take a motion now for approval of the three thirteen twenty-three agenda, I'm sorry, be the prior agenda, right?
Two fourteen.
Is there any changes? Yeah, any discussion or any changes? I move to approve as presented. Motion by John Myers, second by John Deadmers. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right. To the public comment section, so asking for public comments at this point in time. Anybody from the public have a comment at this time? Could please step to the podium and say your name, and I've asked for a couple of people to move forward.
Thank you so much, my name's Lisa Littner, I'm the Johnson County Public Library Director. And just have a couple of things to share with you tonight. One, it's just a really special month this month. I want to publicly thank your appointee to the Library Board of Trustees, Beth Baird. Beth has been a library trustee since two thousand and seven. And at this month's board meeting, she will have served sixteen years on the Johnson County Public Library Board. And I just want to thank her so much for her incredible dedication to our library and our county. She has served as a leader in our board, she served as treasurer, as secretary and assistant treasurer in those years. And I just want to say how grateful I am for your attention to detail, your questions and your suggestions. Beth has been such a dedicated board member. Thank you so much, Beth.
Beth, I have a couple more. Not only that, she served her sixteen years at this maximum term, but she's also the Hensley Townsuit Trustee. And has owned successful private businesses in Johnson County, so. And not only that, you're married to Brian Bear, and that is quite an accomplishment.
No secrets here. She is fantastic and, and I just love that you even use the, the public library in Trafalgar to meet your folks when you're acting as trustee and utilizes our services well, so thank you so much.
Grandmother and babysitter of grandchildren, right?
Beautiful grandbabies. I also wanted to take this opportunity just to keep the council in the loop on something that the library board is working on and our staff as well. We are working on some long-range facility planning and we're in, just in the beginning process of it. We are working with a architect firm called Luminaut, they're in Indianapolis. And we are working with them to look at much-needed improvements on and maintenance to our White River and our Franklin branches. Both of which are taxpayer-owned buildings and are approaching forty years old. We're currently exploring only options for improvements at their current locations, at this time we're not considering any relocations of either branch. And for both locations, we're looking at replacement or repair of mechanical systems, improve invisibility at both locations as well as security. In addition, we'll be studying the public service areas so that our residents' library experience fits today's needs. So our study and research will take place over the next year or so, and we will gather input from the community, our staff, our board of trustees, and our friends and foundation board members. And we'll work with the architects to determine what options are for improvements. And we'll keep you in the loop of those developments over the next few years. All of this planning will be designed to fit within our library's current tax rate, and we will not be asking for additional or new taxes. We estimate that the plans will be presented to the council in, for funding approval in late two thousand twenty-four or early two thousand twenty-five. Like I said, we're just at the very beginning, but we want you guys to know every step of the way what we're working on. We have two public visioning sessions that are open to anybody in Johnson County to attend. Wednesday, May third, at six thirty PM at the White River Branch, and Thursday, May eighteenth, six thirty PM at the Franklin Branch Library. Thank you for allowing me to share you this update with you, and as always, I welcome any additional questions for details that you guys might have.
Questions or discussion?
Thanks.
Thanks Lisa and Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
All right, next up on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm Rebecca Courtney Knight, Becky actually, and I just wanted to introduce myself because I have put in an application to be considered for the open spot since Beth is leaving. And I've lived in Johnson County for twenty years and have worked in schools in Johnson County and in Marion County before that, so I feel like I have a lot of experience working with boards and with libraries, so just wanted to introduce myself.
Well, thank you, and, and we're gonna ask you back up towards the end of the meeting.
I saw that it was at the end, I thought, let's see my face first.
Thank you. Okay, we're also gonna move up to the front here in this section of the meeting for Wagner, Irwin and Shield to give a little presentation on what they're doing. We have Addie Ricker.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Addie Ricker with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy, I've been a consultant there for twenty-two years. And just a little background of what we've been doing for the county over the last several years. Back in two thousand eighteen, we've prepared job descriptions for all county positions. Since then, we have updated several, several departments have received updates, the Sheriff's Department, Clerk's Office, and then some jobs that have come in for reviews. And then in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, we were engaged by the county to conduct a job classification and compensation study. Which where we took the, we used the existing job descriptions and using what we call the factor evaluation system, which is a job classification system for classifying jobs in the public sector, that groups like jobs together. We classified, factored all of those jobs and presented compensation plans to the county. We, we looked at an internal analysis identifying internal pay equity issues and also compared the county's sal, current salaries at that time to the external market and provided some options to the, to the county to implement those. And so since then, we have been working kind of on an as-needed basis assisting with some new positions that have come online or when the county has had special requests for job reviews. And so just to reemphasize the, for the council's role, you have done the things that spells out in Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash five dash three, where you fix the number of officers, deputies in your salary ordinance, describing classifying jobs, you've done that with the job descriptions, the classification system, adopted schedules of compensation, and then you've hired or contracted with persons to develop such plans. What I think from discussions with the county and observations of some of the meetings, the piece I think you're missing is the maintenance piece and how to smoothly accept requests from elected officials, department heads for new jobs, reclassifications. So you're not spending a lot of time in council meetings, getting into the nitty-gritty pieces of that in, in public meetings. So our firm works with many counties on a regular basis assisting with maintenance and, and facilitating that process. And so that's why I'm here today, that we can provide those services and we can customize how that's done in, that your needs. So I'm here to answer questions that you have about that process.
So the reason I asked Addie here tonight was because we had some new positions that were created in the court for the, and I think Sheena could talk about that later on, we don't need to do that right now, I'd like to do this, this discussion at the end of the meeting. But Addie has a long way to go home tonight, she goes home to Marion or
Muncie.
Muncie, so I'd like for you to ask any questions you, you might have of her right now while she's here, and then we can continue this discussion towards the end of the meeting if you'd like. Does anybody have anything for Addie that you'd like to?
Yes, I have a general question. It seems to be a process question that we have, currently we have a position in a department is wanting to go from A to B. The, all the people who would be doing that are, are requesting us to appropriate the funds for the change in the position without there being an analysis. Is that correct?
That's how it's been practicing, and that is backwards to what we would recommend. The, the job descriptions are the foundation of the system. So for, the, the process should be looking at the job description, getting it classified to see where would fall within your system, and then setting the pay according to how you've established the pay system. That would ensure pay equity among like classified jobs, because otherwise, we're kind of setting it, we're having to go backwards and set a job description according to where you've already set the pay.
So if it was going from, and I don't, there's all different kinds of classifications. And part of the problem is that now the cha, council has changed. And I believe, John, were you on the committee? Back when they first did the analysis of the positions?
I was on the committee, no.
Who was on the committee, do you remember?
I do not remember.
I believe it was Rob. Jim and Pete, which they're all gone. And there are several different issues, one is that some question that some I have and perhaps others have about the comparisons of the comparing counties that I believe there were some comparisons that we perhaps need to discuss again. I individually would be interested in discussing that with you. When you had, you know, ten or twelve counties and perhaps those might be compressed where they're more realistic to what we, you know, to our county size. But more so what I've come, struggled with in the process is that, and I won't speak to any particular individual or any department, because that's not the issue. You've explained that we're going sort of backwards on it. And that, I struggle with that when a department head or whomever makes a presentation and it hasn't been through the process, than how we're able to make a reasonable expectation of what it should be, for example, if A is going, want to change the classification of the position without you doing what you're doing, we're sort of just stabbing at it, in my opinion. And I think we have to make a decision, and I, I'm not so certain that this discussion shouldn't be while you're present. So, Mr. President, I think that perhaps that discussion, I know it's a little bit out of, out of the ordinary, but in respect of her travel time, that I think there might be some questions that would come up that would be with Barb and others. Because right now, Barb, if I understand, if you could come up for a second, I'd like to ask you a question about it. At the present time, can you explain what the procedure is that is taking place that you're involved in that also involves Addie?
Barb Davis, county coordinator, in the very beginning, when we first started this process, the commissioners contracted with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy to do the job descriptions and the classifications. Yes, I was kind of in charge of that, obtaining all the information and then sending it in to them. After that time, we still, in the commissioner's budget, had money appropriated to pay Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. So things would still come to me and I would send it in to them for review. Since that time, the money now is in the commission, or the council's budget. I have not had any turned in to me to submit for a long time, but then again, it's not really my decision, I don't know if that's your wishes, if you want that to go to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. They are departments, in my understanding, is probably just turning the information into the auditor and putting it on the agenda to come before you. So yeah, there is kind of a disconnect, I would say.
Yeah, these, these are the procedural things I want to talk about at the end of the meeting, and Addie doesn't need to be present for that. We, we have to first make a decision whether we're gonna go forward with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. And that is gonna be done at the end of the meeting. Then we'll have to re-engage with Addie at that point in time as to how do we go forward. And a lot of these things have to be worked out, I think, in the future, and we can't do it tonight. So if I could
Well, I'm not sure what.
Any further discussion, you know, let's, let's go on.
So what are we asking Addie to do?
Well, I asked her to just engage with us tonight to see if put a face to a name. Are, my recommendation is gonna be for us to go on with it, but there are new members here that may not have the same feeling. And of course, that discussion's gonna have to come at the end of the meeting, I think. Where we're able to talk and engage with court services who, the reason why I asked Addie here was because I was asked to review her job descriptions, and I'm gonna ask her to come forward and tell us why the current system that's in place right now is not going to work for that. So those are the types of things that we're gonna have to work through. Am I wrong, or am I?
No, you're, you're missing a, a system, and a lot of counties, I'm gonna use Hamilton County for an example. They have a, a personnel committee that is comprised of, I think, two or three council members and a commissioner, and then the auditor and HR director on there but not voting. And this has been in place for a long time, it's worked well for them. What happens is that the requests go to the HR director for any new position or any reclassification. Then the HR director is kind of the middle person that then sends the information to our firm to be reviewed. And then we send an assessment back to the committee. The committee reviews it and then makes a presentation to council, a recommendation based on the information. The committee also would review initially on the front end whether or not to send the information to us. Sometimes requests will come in, be minor changes, they just want the job description updated and doesn't really change the classification, or maybe they want to add, maybe if you have a nurse, you want to add a second nurse, that doesn't need to come, that's a council decision, there's no changes to the job. And, and other counties that we work with follow a similar process, taking some of the burden off the full council, but establishing an internal process for department heads and elected officials submitting those requests, setting deadlines of when the information needs to be submitted. Some do it monthly, have these monthly meetings, others set a time period, could be two or three months at the beginning of the year. Others have a more of a quarterly time period when they accept these reviews. So I think that's the piece that you're, you're missing and, and you can establish that as council as a, a maintenance plan in, in place. So the procedures are clear and established, and then a department head just can't walk up in front of council requesting a new job or a additional funds or compensation without going through the process. One of the advantages of using our firm is that we're an outside unbiased view of the job. We look at the job, not the person. I don't know Joe from Sam or anyone else, so when we're looking at the job, we're evaluating what the job requirements are, the supervisory, the, the education requirements, the work environment, looking at all those factors, and also looking at factors internally, if, what ripple effect would this have if this job was moved here? How will this impact the, the classification system as a whole when, if you make this change, or if you add this job, what does it look like? So those are all the things that we are looking at when we evaluate jobs for a county. Things that maybe council, you know, Beth's getting into a lot of weeds sometimes in a, in a meeting when you're hearing something for the first time.
And I think that's my point, that, that what we're missing is the process, and if you could, for example, provide us what you just explained of how that was working. We typically don't like to compare ourselves to Hamilton County, they should be comparing themselves to us, but be that as it may, it's still a process in taking that, that attitude that we tend to have about Hamilton County. You know, if, if there is an example of that process, that's what I'm looking for that I believe is missing. And it isn't specific to any particular department or elected officials, it's, it's just what is the process that we're missing? And when we have them, any department or, or anybody come to us and say, we want to change A to B, they come to us saying, here is what we're asking for the particular position without it going through the process, and I struggle with that. And, and that, it is a discussion that we need to have that with you not being here at the end, I don't know what questions might be asked of you, but that's one question that I have, is what do you suggest the process be, since we're not doing the process as a whole, we in fact do have department heads who, or anybody, doesn't matter who it is, that come to us and ask for a change. And then it, I always ask, has it went to you, and then, no, it hasn't. And there might be a reason why there's an immediate need for it to change, but then majority of the time that need is not there.
Right.
And, you know, so we ought to, in my opinion, we need to understand what it would be in a preferred process.
Right, several of the counties have just a subcommittee of council be the kind of a committee that reviews those requests, the requests would come to the committee. And then a committee would decide whether or not that goes on to our firm to, to look at. I just had, just had a county last week, they sent me a review, it was for an IT position. And then the very next day, they're like, wait, the subcommittee decided that it's not gonna affect the classification, we don't want, we don't need you to look at it, so they kind of pulled it back, so I didn't have to spend, you know, their time or money. They decided in-house that it wasn't gonna affect the classification, so they, they kept that internally, so it was their call whether it was reviewed. Because you don't want, you want it some sort of buffer, because you don't want department heads just contacting us whenever, because we would be billing for those calls, and we don't want, we only want to communicate with the, the departments that you approve to communicate, we, we need that buffer there, not only for you but for us, to kind of maintain some order. And I, I can stick around if you, if you would prefer that.
I don't think she needs to stick around, I think we need to come up with a plan.
I do have one thing, if I may.
Yes.
And I will keep you with just a minute.
Oh, you're fine.
My only question was to explain the maintenance program, but I think you've done that. And I just want to make sure I understand, your, the maintenance program would be whatever this council set up to be?
Yes.
They, they can differ?
Yes, I did provide John with a draft sample.
Okay.
And it can be customized to set up, it was just kind of an example of how one can be set up, but the composition of the committee.
So whether the grid system is used or we use years of service, that type of stuff would be something we decided, correct?
Yeah, this is, this would be just the process for reviewing jobs, nothing to do with the actual compensation and how, that's kind of separate. I think you, the maintenance plan is just dealing with the job descriptions, the factoring, the classifications.
Thank you.
You have that, John.
And I'll, I'll forward it to everyone, it's just a, a basic maintenance plan. So, please talk to us about where we are in queue, I got you to the front of the line tonight, so. The queue for, you know, salary study and budget time.
Oh, first, very funny. So we do have about ten counties ahead, if we, if you are wanting one, we will have to get you on the list so we can have it done by September, October, that's where we're, the line for a compensation.
And that's what we need to talk about towards the end.
And we would need to discuss the scope of what you're looking for.
Right, so additional services other than what you're currently providing, can you talk about that just a little bit?
As far as what the maintenance would be?
Well, what other services could you provide? Or would you provide?
For the compensation piece? I mean, I can tell you everything we do in general.
No.
But I don't think you want that, so I'm, are you looking for more compensation?
I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
All right, so anybody have any additional questions for Addie tonight, John? Okay, Addie, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Be safe going home.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, are there any additional public comments tonight, anybody online, IT?
No question.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on, hearing the, we're to routine manners. I'll accept the motion for the consent agenda, anybody want to take anything off of the consent agenda, move to later, or are you okay with it? If so, please present a motion. I'll move to approve as presented. Motion by John Myers.
Second.
Second by John Dip, or I'm sorry, John Mahlers. All right, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye. Nay, all those wanting to vote nay, say nay. Sorry, too many Johns and Mams. All right, okay, so motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda. Alright, okay, so motion carries, alright, so the next item on the agenda.
Evening, Andy Barnhart, Chief Deputy of the Sheriff's Office. Uh, the first thing we have, item one is an additional appropriation, and this is part of the lit budget. And what this is, is our special teams pay and roll briefly for the new members of the council. What we do is we have our our set, uh, job descriptions, our set positions within the sheriff's office. We're up the one oh five budget and then the jail budget, which is one oh four, and then those that are encompassed by the by the lit budget. And, uh, we have some additional job duties that are assigned to different people and that includes, uh, special teams. Such as SWAT, SCUBA, SER, FTO, and I can explain any of those acronyms that are needed if you want. But this line item is designed to pay those individuals. Uh, to their, it goes on to their regular pay, so they they have the normal salary in their line item for that position. And then the additional pay is added in through this line item, so what we're requesting is fifty one hundred additional and and real quickly, I'll explain what's going on there. Um, Heath Brandt, the Director of the nine one one center, has, uh, in the past, since the consolidation twenty fourteen. Always had a person that was their IDAX coordinator and the, was also the IDAX coordinator for all agencies in the county. And that was part of the consolidation, it was an agreement, and they've actually got contracts that the attorney should have, I brought a copy if anybody wants to see it, but it's something that's renewed on a regular basis. But those contracts are something that he wanted to do away with and actually, uh, eliminate having an IDAX coordinator that took care of the rest of the agencies. Within the county, and he was, uh, his plan was to put that back on the individual agencies. Well, the the person who's been handling that is, uh, Mary Ann Gallagher Little, and we have actually since hired her. And would like to continue that as part of her duties with the sheriff's office, so she has always been our IDAX coordinator for the sheriff's office as part of that. As well as for other county agencies and then eight outside agencies. So what we're wanting to do is, uh, kinda bring that money along with her, and that's twenty six hundred dollars a year extra. That's part of her assigned duties that she does during her normal work week, this is not on top of that. But because she has additional duties to what she's being hired on as, we're asking that that same amount be. Uh, added into our budget and for us, it'll be in that special teams pay to be added to her salary to continue those duties. So our recommendation would be to continue that, not per, put that burden back on the individual agencies. Because we still have the person that has been doing that since twenty fourteen, they do not have the people to do that. Uh, we're not, we're talking about a a minimal, how many hours a week, Mary Ann, like maybe five to at most ten hours a week. A month, five to ten hours a month, we're not talking about a ton of time, and this is. Her normal thirty seven and a half hours during that same time, but it requires special certification, she has to keep her certification up. And she also certifies everyone else in the county that that uses the IDAX system, which is the the crime information system. So we're just basically asking that the, uh, and this is, uh, Heath wishes as well that the money that she's being paid. And was being paid in dispatch, come along with her to her position at the sheriff's office to continue those duties.
Okay, so the item that we're considering right now is C one A.
Correct, so the special teams pay, that's twenty six hundred dollars for her, and then there's a little add-on there, we're actually out of money. In that line item for other people as well, so as we've added correctional officers over the years, we have not been fully staffed. So we've not needed to address that, well, we've had to bring on additional field training officers. And there's some, uh, additional people on the SER team as well, so we needed that little bit of buffer to pay them as well, so that's what the the, uh, extra money on top of that, twenty five hundred dollars. So that that, we'll call it a stipend, that's not really what it is, that additional pay is between five hundred and a thousand onto their normal pay for that. For that special certification that they have and have to maintain.
Uh, she in the jail or in the sheriff's department?
She's on the jail side, yeah, she's, she's actually a correctional officer and handling all the inventory and some special, uh, special climates we have for her there. But she's gonna maintain that certification as the IDAX coordinator, that, uh, there's no reason to hand that off to someone else when she's, uh, she's. Been the expert in the county for for eight years plus doing that.
I just wanna make sure part of what's coming out of the lit, part coming out of the general.
Right, it should all be, it should all be lit.
And Amy, is there a title change or anything that we need to enter motion?
I always need IT guys nearby for John. Um, and thanks for acknowledging new guys, um, to the council, but twenty six hundred of this then is carried over from. Um, the nine one one side, is that what I understood you to say?
Well, I, of course, I can't transfer anything out of his. So, but we're asking to add it to ours, my understanding from Heath is that, uh, he wanted to keep at least part of that money. To pay, uh, they will still have some IDAX responsibilities within the nine one one center, and he still wanted to pay a person. Some amount for that, uh, he did not go into that, he knew I was presenting this, I don't know what his answer to that is. I don't wanna shortchange her, I wanna bring. So I'm, I'm not sure there, but.
The other piece, that twenty five hundred then goes to.
Other people, we're just trying to beef that up a little bit, that obviously, uh, and this is good news, well, we've made some headway, and you know, I. I've told the council before about how we've struggled with all the correctional officer positions, we made a little headway in that, uh, which is great news, but that does then. Uh, show the need in some of the other areas that are supporting light items, we'll call them to, uh, and one of those is the specialty pay, and that's. Where we're asking to beef that up just a little bit more.
And final, final comment, it's not overly relevant as far as dollars, but this is not, was it accounted for in the budgeting process, or is this above what was accounted for?
This is above, it would be an additional appropriation, correct, yeah, we didn't know how this was all gonna happen at budget time, this is something new that came up. I- in discussions with Heath, and he said that his intent was to, uh, drop this back to the, to the individual agencies, I I don't know why or any more explanation than that. And then, uh, I believe it's because they're shorthanded as well, and so they're trying to alleviate some of those things the nine one one center is doing. But with with having her with us, sheriff's office instead, we're able to allow her to to devote that, that's very small amount of time to keep, continue doing this for the other agencies in the county.
Any other questions, Brad?
Now so much question, I fully understand what you're doing. Originally budgeted in that line item was twenty four thousand. And you've used twen- you've used twenty, and we're at the end of March, so I guess, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you've used four. Used four, so I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned as to why the need to rush in to get the additional amount when you have such a balance and you've only used four thousand.
Well, because that's paid out for the rest of the, on a check by check basis.
Yes, yes, but I also know that you have several one hundred, uh, in your one hundred series that. At in positions that have not been filled, so. I, I guess I'm asking, why wouldn't you, rather than ask for an additional appropriation and new money. Uh, this early in the ballgame, why not just try to transfer some funds and then see if you need it at the end?
Well, we could, uh, i- it's one way or another, we're probably gonna become, we end up using a lot of that for overtime. Which is how we've avoided coming for additional appropriations, as you know, in the past, so it's sort of, whether we do it now or whether we do it later, and I just like to. I like things nice and tidy, and if this is something we intend to do in budget from here on out, why not put it in the, right now is.
Because we try not to additionally appropriate from the, from the funds unless it's absolutely positively beyond a shadow of a doubt necessary. So, and I'm not saying, no, I'm ju- that I would vote, no, I'm just asking if you have means to transfer it from another line item. And you've only currently used four thousand, and I know it's budgeted to the end of the year and you may have to come back at a later time. I guess I just don't see the immediate need for an additional appropriation rather than a transfer.
I guess that'd be up to the council to decide if that's how you wanna do it, I I'm just bringing it to you as a, as the, what I view is the, is the. Proper way to do it so that it's accounted for correctly rather than, I, I don't wanna use this term in a negative connotation. There's always a bit of a shell game moving those, those components around, and I would rather, because this is involving something unique where we're bringing her from another agency. And she has that money at another agency, I was wanting to reflect it in our budget, that that's, that is, it is coming over to.
Anything in the long run, and the money would be placed there at a later time, if in fact it was needed, correct? I I just wanna make sure that we were seeing, there is an alternate way of doing it other than an additional appropriation, okay?
Can I ask one more question just to follow this? This is more of a curiosity question, and as a common practice, you've got a salary, these are salary positions that are provided extra work. Is it, is it common to give them a stipend for that every time, I mean, in other words, what goes, what's expected within scope? If it's temporary to just, that's part of the job versus getting compensated for it.
Additional, so we, we, we have a a set job description and set duties that are part of the job. And then these things are above and beyond, so that that's why they're called special teams is, uh, would be like your SWAT team, they require additional training. And, uh, that includes keeping up with certifications and things like that, so it's outside of, these things are outside of the scope of the normal job. Which is why they're, they're added in the way they are. It's the best way I can describe it, is it's, it's not, every correctional officer is not a field training officer, every correctional officer is not part of the SER team. Uh, and things like that, so that's why we try to designate that that's not part of, so for example, if if a person resigns then. And their replacement is not going to get that certification, then they're not going to get that additional pay, so that's, uh, it's not baked in as part of this, this job, a part of the job.
Okay, so, uh, if there are no further questions, entertain a motion for item C one A.
I move to approve.
Motion by John Getmer, second by John Myers, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pardon me?
This Melinda's on Zoom, we need to roll call.
So six to one, motion carries. Alright, next item.
You're gonna have further discussion on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
Further discussion, I'm sorry.
I just wanna clarify, I didn't vote no because I didn't think it was appropriate. I only voted no because I felt it should be done by by a transfer rather than added new money, sounds right. Just know, the no is not because I I didn't understand or I didn't want this to happen, I just wanted you to know, I felt it needed to be done with a transfer.
I understand.
Okay.
Alright, so the next item up on the agenda is item C two A.
And this is, uh, capital improvements four hundred and five thousand, and basically this is the money that was, uh, put in this fund. As part of the CIT team for capital improvements to build the expansion onto the sheriff's office for their offices. We didn't use it last year, so it reverted, obviously, cause it wasn't ready yet at that point when it was put into the, uh, to the fund. And so now that needs to be re-appropriated, uh, my understanding is everything's on track to get that going this year, that hopefully it'll be going out to bid here before you off long.
Me with Wes tomorrow, actually, so.
Alright, this comes from the American Rescue Plan Fund. Anybody have any discussion, any questions?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Motion approved by John Myers. Second by Ron Dear. All those in favor signify, oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries, any additional discussion?
Yeah, the additional discussion should be before the vote.
We're good, alright. Thank you, thank you. Hey, item, uh, next up is item three, A and B taken together, please. And it's by the Board of Commissioners.
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner, uh, just looking for you guys to appropriate money for the. Professional services for the community corrections of probation and highway renovation, this is all ARPA funds. Uh, and the highway salt storage barn, we've decided. That's all we're asking for.
Questions?
It was free money, right?
On the highway property. We're moving it over to the east side, making room on the west side where it sets now for the community corrections of all probation. And then we'll raise the community corrections building. Take it out. And highways, looking to get a makeover, if any of you can come up with a keen funding source for highway, I'm lawyers, so.
Here, you can come in with a plan.
We're talking about a plan, aren't we, John?
It's not there yet. Alright, any discussion? Regarding three A and B, please. Second by John Myers. Additional discussion? Call for the vote, please, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next items will be items four, A, B, C, and D to be taken together, please. And this is drug-free community, uh, do we have anybody here?
Hi, yeah, Michelle McMahon, uh, Drug Free Johnson County Coordinator.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, good evening, thanks for having me, I am just asking for the appropriations for. Our funding for the categories for our grantees. Um, we are required to split this at a minimum of twenty five percent of our full budget for the year. Um, into the three categories, um, A, B, and C, treatment intervention, prevention, education, justice, and law enforcement. Uh, we have gone through our grant cycle for our grant process, um, the commissioners approved all of our grantee agreements this morning. So, um, these allocations will allow us to then go ahead and get started in funding those grantees. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions on those.
Any questions for Michelle?
Who are some of the grantees?
Yeah, um, we have quite a few grantees, actually. Um, in treatment intervention, we have George Junior Republic, Reach for Youth, um, Heaven and Earth Church for the Recovery Church. Terror Treatment Center and Turning Point Domestic Violence Services. In prevention education, we have Upstream Prevention, representing the, um. Atlas Team and Building Bridges, which is a collaboration with the Johnson County Public Library. Uh, Boys and Girls Club of Johnson County, Girls Inc. of Johnson County, Brave Backers, which is Indian Creek High School Post Prom Effort. Recover Out Loud, Turning Point, and then again, in justice and law enforcement, we have adult probation, juvenile probation. Community Corrections, Franklin Police Department, Narcotics Division, Greenwood Police Department, Narcotics Division, Greenwood Probation Department. And the Johnson County Sheriff's Department and, uh, oh, that's it, yes. Yes, two hundred and fifty pages I was told by the commissioners is what I submitted to them in agreements, so. Yeah, uh, I'm really excited about some of the, some of the, uh, funding this year, we have some new programs that we hadn't had before. Uh, we have some that are reaching at-risk populations down in, um, Edinburgh that really hadn't. Hadn't really, there were pockets that hadn't been hit with some of these funds before, so I think it's just, I'm, I'm really excited to, to see what some of these grantees do with this.
So a lot of people.
Yeah, it's a lot of people.
Alright, any further questions? So we're taking four, A, B, C, and Z.
I move to approve as presented.
Motion by John Myers. Second by Ron Dear. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please. Call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next up for consideration are items five A and six A. Mister Prosecutor. Hello, sir.
Lance Hemner, Johnson County Prosecutor. This should be easy. What we're trying to do is we have an account where the, the uh employee is paid entirely out of the one eighteen forty account, and it should be half out of one eighteen and half out of um the general fund, which is the one oh eight account. So we just want to split that. Make sure it's all legal and then we'll get out of your hair.
And you're asking for this to be retro to one, three, twenty-three?
Yes, please.
For both items. Alright, discussion or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Melinda Grismer.
Second.
Second from John Myers. Any further discussion? Offer vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Most generous. Promise I try and stay out of your hair after that. I will stay out of your hair now. Thanks so much.
Okay, next item is item eleven, council. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Community corrections.
Yes, I did.
Seven, eight, nine, and ten. Um I'm Angela Morris, Director of Court Services. Fine. Um I believe you all received an email from Amy Thompson with the organizational chart that you requested. Um yes, and a explanation as to today's agenda items. Um I have talked with my liaison, Ms. Burton, and we went through um questions she had and um just a couple of things I wanted to point out about seven and eight. Um it, the ten thousand dollar supplemental we're requesting is coming out of a community transition fund. Um Department of Corrections pays us to house um community transition people. Um so it is not general taxpayer money. Um also the money is already in that fund, so I'm not adding to or taking out of the bucket. It's just rearranging what's in the bucket already. Um this position is required to be a probation officer, so it is following the salary study or the salary mandate. Um for that position. So I am I will welcome any questions you have.
This is the transitions from the prisons back to the county.
Yes.
And they do serve some time at Community Corrections.
Yep. Yeah, they can get modified out. It does have to be agreed upon by the prosecutor. Well, the prosecutor gets to weigh in, we get to weigh in defense, and then the judge determines if the modification is granted. And then we get a per diem every day for um those offenders to stay in our facility.
Are we getting more of those offenders?
We've asked, yes.
I just didn't know if the numbers are going up or they staying the same.
Um and as of last year, we'd had like three. And this year, we've had quite a few more since the new structure has been set up.
Okay.
Okay, this probably referencing what we're just discussing with Irwin. Title changed probation officer quality assurance director. That position does not exist. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the title doesn't exist. Um she exists and does that make sense?
If I may, Angela, we went over this. I did talk to Angela quite extensively. This is one of the several positions due to the implosion of this program last year and the restructuring and the rebuilding. There were no uh, there were no positions. There were no job descriptions to be had. So therefore, what they have done is reviewing the options on, on their structure. And of course, I was studying mine in the car and it's on the front seat up there, so have it with me. But reviewing their structure, they have decided the position that they thought they were gonna need, what was the one in, in, they're not.
The deputy director spot.
Right, the deputy director spot. They are not going to fill that now, projectively, three, four years or even longer. And what they've decided is this quali- quality assurance, which is another new one, but they don't have a job description for, because they're, this is new structure. Um it's those uh responsibilities for the data flow, for the program, and the things that the two would be doing together, there wasn't a need for both. So they're eliminating one, rearranging some responsibilities, and then putting it down to the other. Is that in a nutshell, basically?
That's accurate. And I, you know, I agree with the process of submitting potential job, job positions to Addie um and having those reviewed in the future. Um it's just, we were tasked with this last year, and I know that obviously, it's not set up in place now, so.
Well, this is where I came into, came into this uh how do I want to say it? It's a quandary. You know, we have a judicial system and court services in court that's being restructured. So there is no job description right now. So to submit to Irwin uh at this point in time would take two months, at the very least. At the very least. So that's where we are, and that's why I have that's why I want this discussion to go towards the end. Because we can't solve it here. But I, I agree with what Angela's doing. I think this is where we have to trust our elected officials and department heads, especially in the judicial system and in court services who are bound by state requirements. That uh in, in enabling them to move forward and provide the services that the state is requiring them to.
My hope, I, I probably didn't do it that well, but I tried to explain what J-RAC was and what's being required of us. Sheena and I went over it today, some just requirements that are coming, and we were able to reference this quality assurance director's position several times that will be utilized in the upcoming years for J-RAC that's state mandated now to have this, that the prosecutor participates in, the sheriff, council commissioner, um defense, probation, and corrections. So um but I'm also, I do understand and respect what Mr. Dear is saying in that.
Yeah, but we've got to find a better way, and we don't have it right now. So we've got to find a better and a quicker way to analyze these things and get them taken care of. If anyone has any suggestions, I'm open for it, but uh right now, it's a convoluted mess.
John, I think that, I think that's exactly the point. Um you've identified the problem. We, it's gonna be a while before we get to a solution, but half the battle to finding the solution is identifying the problem. And, and, and we've done that now. It's gonna take some time to do that. In the meantime, we can't let absence of a process get in the way of getting things done, and I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Also. Anybody have any other questions? For Angela?
Isn't that what it says? It says probation officer slash quality assurance director.
Somebody got this in a motion.
I got you.
Oh, wait, before we do that.
Yes.
Anybody have any further discussion?
Oh, I see.
Anybody have any further discussion? So we are considering right now seven, eight, nine, and ten.
The seven and eight.
Just seven and eight? Oh, I got too far.
You can go ahead and pass. Nine and ten.
Can't do that.
Are you ready for a motion, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to approve items seven and eight. Item seven, Amy, that's the one you want to do the job title change to add probation officer. And that's retro to one twenty-six, twenty-three. And item A, a probation officer to change the title to probation officer slash quality assurance director. So item seven and eight on the agenda.
Motion by Pam Burton, second. Second by John Getmers. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. Um for nine and ten, these are shift differential pays um for our night shift correction officers. We modeled this after the jail and what they do with their correctional officers. Um we did budget this in last year's budgets. It was just in the wrong fund. So um I'm asking that it get taken out of the eleven twenty-two and put into the appropriate fund, which is the twelve thirty-three. That's the lit fund that the correction officers are paid out of. So neither, neither fund is taxpayer dollars. The eleven twenty-two is the project income. Twelve thirty-three is the lit. Um we, we just made, we made an error in the fund it was coming out of.
So this is a wash.
Move, move to prove.
Motion by John Getmers.
I'll second.
Second by Pam. Further discussion? Call for a roll.
Yes.
Uh yes.
Aye.
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 Alright.
Aye.
Also, for whatever it's worth, I um Court Services was formed a year ago Thursday. It, this coming Thursday. Um I anticipate things to smooth out um with these requests coming forward, maybe one more month. Um just seeing what pieces we've missed or are needed. This could be the last month, but I, I also, I don't want you to think we're gonna just keep coming back every month for the next year, so.
You're gonna let courts do that, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up is item eleven. Correct? Stay with me here, but keep in the bumpers on. So it is for professional services and Amy, as I understand it, this is for Addie and uh our financial analyst, Mike Reuter, correct? And combined. So uh that is for these services and it would fall under the council. Eleven fifty-seven, oh one thirty-five. And I think we've been safe to appropriate this money now, this time, don't you? Yeah. So any discussion regarding this?
I, I have a question. How do we arrive at that number? And what's the scope of work we're asking for from both, from each?
So we do have, we do have scope letters and contractual letters that uh I think legal could provide to you. Uh but it's, it's really, it's kind of a uh I don't want to say time and material. It's kind of a time based situation, and it's like a twenty thousand dollar area.
So there's some logic behind how we arrived.
Yes.
When getting that kind of.
Yes, and I do have Addie's statement here also from last year. And she came well under, you know, it was like the eighteen thousand dollar contract, I think, guaranteed maximum, something that makes roughly. And it came in like fifteen or sixteen. And it's used to be under the commissioners. And now it's under us.
But you, but you are asking included in the forty thousand a uh twenty twenty-four budget process and included in a grid or step system based on years of service? Is that, could you explain what you're requesting there?
You're asking me that?
Yeah. It's on the, on the item.
Um I'd be better to, if I can explain.
So you're talking about them doing that in this forty thousand? So we're talking about years of service uh that exists in many communities throughout central Indiana. Uh but we don't have that. Is that correct? So you're talking about something like um let's just use this as an example, some that I looked at before coming to the meeting, that after three years, there would be a hundred dollar uh year of service. After five years, it would be two hundred dollars a year of service times five years, which would be a thousand, not twenty would be. And we're requesting that Irwin do that. But the potential is we wouldn't get that until September, which is, we're in the budget time. Is that correct?
This is just to appropriate the money in case we decide to do any of this, it's already there.
Yeah, and we could, you could appropriate tonight, and then we can engage with Addie in more details to work out the scope, and then get that to y'all for your review. So we do appropriation tonight, and then we approve the contract at your next meeting.
Could be an over or under situation.
Yeah, for sure. And then if, if we're over, then you appropriate some money at that time, right? So I think that may be the best way, instead of this kind of around the bush discussion on what the scope is gonna be without Addie being present uh kind of thing, so that, that may be the best use of y'all's time.
And we don't want to get into contract negotiation and.
Publicly, yeah, yeah, exactly. So.
Yeah, I apologize for kicking that off the key.
No.
Okay, motion approved by John. Oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Second. I have a motion on the table by John Myers and a second by John Getmers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Melinda? Call for your vote.
I'm sorry, I.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any further discussion? Alright, so let me find my way here to get back to this agenda within three. Alright, so now we're. All right, so now we're up to the board appointments to the Edinburgh Wright Higginman Public Library Board. There's someone here that's in. I know that we have an applicant.
I would like to speak on the behalf for the Edinburgh Writing Public Library, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, Tanya Kreider is the application that you have before you. And I know that she has been recommended by, oh, my goodness, his name has just slipped my mind.
Chris Hoffman.
Chris Hoffman, thank you. And I personally know Tanya, she's been a, an educator in our elementary school system for forty-three years. She's a pillar of our community and she is now retired and she's replacing me on that board. And we would be fortunate to get her, actually, so just wanted to give you that information.
Thanks for that recommendation. Do we have any other applicants for the Friday? Or for Edinburgh?
No.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Pam, second by John Myers. Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. Motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Kreider. Okay, next is a board appointment to the Johnson County Public Library Board. Uh, and I'll try to name these names. Rebecca Courtney Knight, Kelly Henthorn, uh, Bobby Whitmore, Timothy Edsall, Ackland Wisdom, and Shealy Hyde. Have I missed anybody? So anybody present at this point in time, come on up to the podium and introduce yourself and give your name and address, please.
Rebecca Courtney Knight, eighty-five oh-three South seven, seven hundred West. It's a Morgantown address, but I really live in Johnson County, so.
I've seen you before somewhere.
I mean, you.
Live right there on the line.
I am right there on the line, but I'm definitely Johnson County library person. And I was in Johnson County School Corporations for about a year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Are any other applicants present?
Hello, I'm Kelly Henthorn, I'm on Zoom.
Okay, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
My video, there we go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, wow, there I am. Um, yeah, I've been a resident of Johnson County for about twenty years. Um, I'm a publishing professional. I've been editing books for the higher education market, nonfiction. I'm an indexer since about nineteen eighty-eight. I'm also a volunteer manager over at the Art Craft and very much wanna give back to my community in the library situation. Everybody have any questions? I don't know if you've got my application, I assume.
Okay, do you might have any further questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say that I'm impressed with all of the applicants that we received. And it's gonna be a very hard vote. I, I kinda would like to hear from Lisa if she, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, if she has any recommendations. And I know it's probably gonna be hard with the selection that we have.
Yeah, if we could, if we could ask her, let's get through all the applicants first. Are there any, are there any other applicants? I'm sorry, may have stutter stepped. Come on up, Lisa, don't see any other applicants.
It'll be two more steps.
Wow, I, I am impressed, too. I will say that two people reached out to me who, and spoke to me on the telephone regarding, regarding the application and regarding the library board, and I spoke with both of them. I wish I could add eight more people to my library board. It sounds like some fantastic applicants. I will mention, I, I did speak with Becky here. And one thing we're really wanting to do is make sure that we have somebody from the southern part of the county. We like to try to have geographic kind of representation on our library board. And I believe Becky would fulfill that desire. Also, her work with the Trafalgar Garden Club. We're planning a community garden at the New Clark Pleasant branch, and I think her expertise would line level for that. But again, I know it's your decision, so, um, thank you.
No, thank you very much for your recommendation. Very sweet. All right, any other applicants having come on board a little later? So we've heard all the applicants and all entertaining a motion at this point in time. Any further discussion?
Everybody's afraid to make a recommendation because they're all so good.
I'll do it. I'll, I'll move that we appoint Becky Courtney Knight to the Johnson County Public Library Board.
Motion by John Dittner for Becky Courtney Knight. Waiting a second.
I'll second.
Second by John Myers for discussion.
Yeah.
Further discussion, please.
Is there any other board members in the southern part of the county? You said, you know, you like to keep them dispersed out. I just wonder what the balance is.
So right now, the most south we have is one of our folks who live in Franklin, but sort of like the Nineveh, not Nineveh, Nineveh Road area, kind of, but it's in Franklin. So that's pretty much the southernmost board member we have. And I would, and I don't know if it's allowed, luckily, Legals here. I mean, I would love to have everybody's application to thank them because I had no idea so many people were interested. If that's a possibility. Because I know, I know it takes time out of your, out of your life and schedule. And I'd love to meet you too, the Zoomer online, if I can get your information to just thank, thank them for wanting to be part of us.
Thank you, Lisa, yes.
This is in reference to the additional applications that we reserve, we received, rather. And the council has requested that individuals who are interested in applying for any board positions appear before the council. And we didn't have that tonight. I don't know why they didn't get the message, but I wish that we could hear and see the bodies that we're considering. And I think that's sort of what Lisa was referencing. And I don't know that what would happen. I don't know if there's any need to delay the decision. But what would happen if we delayed the decision? Would you interview all of them or what would you do, Lisa?
So it's really the council's decision to appoint. Sometimes people do reach out to me and say, hey, I've applied to be on the council and, uh, you know, ask me questions about duties and responsibilities and things like that, so.
Well, I understand it's our decision. I'm just saying that, you know, your recommendations, you hadn't reviewed all of them, so.
Well, the motion has been made and the seconded and the discussion, any further discussion can be had.
So our board vacancy becau, is vacant in April. So we would, we would love to have a board member as, you know, as soon as April first, if possible. That way we maintain our seven, seven-member board.
I'm not suggesting that we delay it. I'm suggesting that we get the message out again that when people apply for it, we had all these applicants and only one who chose to come before the council to be considered and it was all on paper. And I don't like that. I like talking to the individual. And Melinda's made that point before also.
I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah.
Sometimes people are late to the, to the dance and they may not have gotten the message. But I think if we go out with our advertisements in the future for our public notices, if we could put that on the public notice would be helpful. I'm sorry, Melinda, go ahead.
No, it was me, I think. No, I, that's what I was going to encourage. Sometimes I don't, I think it's just a matter of that they don't know to do that. And I know this board has expressed that, but sometimes I think they just don't know that it, that they, you know, should be here. So there's a way we could get that information to them, either in writing or when they go to apply, fill out the application or return it or something, that would be, that would probably be helpful.
Yeah, although not a requirement, I think should be strongly suggested because that would be certainly a consideration in the future, right?
Yeah, it's not a requirement that they be here.
Right.
Legal.
All right, so any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. All right, so we have our appointment, thank you. Okay. So back to our discussion or for new and old business at the end of the meeting here.
No, there was approval of resolution twenty twenty-three.
I'm getting here, hold on. All right, item D three, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two, authorizing Johnson County Departments and elected officials to accept payments via electronic funds transfer using the automatic clearinghouse, ACH. Is there someone here that could speak to that, please?
I can. So what prompted this was Adam Deverey, County Attorney. What prompted this was, I think Juvenile Community Corrections has a county that is moving to uh, in the future only pay their claims via East ACH and EFT. So if we don't do our resolution to accept those payments, we can no longer have contracts with that county to handle their juveniles. So this is by statute, our way to put us in position to receive those payments. The resolution allows it to be department head and elected official discretion if they even want to accept payments. So the Otter's Office would have to accept payments, but it gives them the option to do that, especially as society shifts towards more electronic methods of handling payments. So this just allows the county to do that at department head and elected official discretion.
Okay. Any further discussion, any questions?
Do, does this cost us anything? Do we have to get any kind of special equipment or? All through our.
I don't think so, no.
All right, any further discussion? Any questions for legal? Well, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item D three on the agenda, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two.
Second.
Motion by Pam Burton, second by John Myers. Further discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Hi.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Are we ready for E one? Further discussion on Addie Rooker's presentation and whether we want to move forward with Wagner, Irwin, Shealy, and Associates? So anybody have any further discussion in that regard? Andy?
Uh, you asked for some perspective, maybe from the departments. If I could give that real quick, Andy Barnard, you kept it in the sheriff's office. Uh, the sheriff and I have talked about this extensively. Real quick, I think the process for new positions, I don't see that anyone would have any way, a reason to disagree with that. Uh, I, I know that from our perspective, if that had been in place in the past, uh, I know that's been expressed by the council now the last few years, but that was not something that was well-known. And obviously with the change of elected officials and change of department heads over the years, uh, it sort of drifted to where it is now. I think having that firmed up somewhere would be beneficial to everybody, uh, as long as it was a streamlined process. I like the idea that she said of having a committee and that the department heads could then come and present to that committee, streamline it, make it super quick and then go, because the council's looking at the fiscal reflection of that or how it's gonna affect the budget, less so than the, the job descriptions themselves because that's what the department heads and the commissioners through them and the elected officials. Uh, and then, well, briefly, I think I've made it pretty clear in the past that I think that the job study is a waste of money. I think that I've done it every year and we're the largest department in, in the county. I've done it myself the last four years for our department. And it's very easy to look up or call. Most of it's on the DLGF website to get the, uh, what, what other counties are paying their people. And there has been a lot of issues with, in my opinion, the basis of comparison for the salary studies in the past. And I think that's something that takes me a week to do for the, for the largest number of employees in the county shouldn't be that big of a deal for the other department heads. And that would give the department heads a chance to explain their reasoning for some of the things. And then the, the numbers are what they are. And I think that you're belaboring the process by having an outside company do the exact same thing. And we've already been told that we're tenth in line. And this is nothing against that firm. I think they've been, done great and Addie's done great when I've needed job description stuff in the past. So it's nothing against them, but, but why wait till September, October and we get in a situation where we were last year where we got the information and it was too late at that point when we can do it ourselves, uh, very simply, just to sign that to the department heads. And I may get some daggers after this meeting when I'm told that by, uh, but quite frankly, if we can do it, then others can too. So that's, that's my two cents on the, on the situation.
No, I agree with you, Andy. And if I could speak here just a little bit, um, have, having gone through this process a bit, I don't, personally, I don't think a committee's the answer. Um, I think that one person could handle it in, uh, and I don't know what that looks like. I think that a meeting of the minds between council and commissioners could come up with some kind of answer in that regard. And I think they're way ahead of us on that. I think the commissioners are. But the problem that I have with a committee is that I think it takes away our trust of the department heads and elected officials to do their job. They are in that position. They've been placed in that position. They've been elected to provide that service and do these things that were, that were asking a committee to do, who really doesn't know what the position is or how to run that department or that elected officials area. So I, I kinda go out, have gone away from the committee answer. I don't know what the alternative is.
And so I don't disagree on that. My, my concept was that in a committee could be two people or three, it's something small, but that the department head would explain to them so that, that they wouldn't just receive a, a paper copy of what the name is and, and then guess on it. The department head would present to that committee and say, we think it falls under this category. Comat two or whatever the, the different acronyms they picked. And here's why we think it should be that.
I think the other, the other factor that falls into this are, is the state statute. And I can't, I can't speak to that, but I do know that there are requirements that have to be met by the county and whether these job classifications come from a federal classification level. But the thing I see is being the problem for a county versus somebody with just a plain HR department, you know, that's a business. In that you have the judiciary, you have law enforcement. We have the different elected officials and we have all these departments. We have highway and I'll go on down the list. We have, you know, animal control. And so it's broad as it is wide and it's a spectrum. So I don't know that you are able to present somebody that's capable of doing all these tasks that need to be done. But that's what I've come across so far. Thank you. Anybody else have any discussion?
Yes. Um, I always keep referring back to, I was here when, so, I know, I know. When the grid system was first established. And I was here when we did the first job study in. job study in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. So when we did the second job study. And I will tell you that I when I was auditor, I participated in a HR listserv that is out there for Johnson County. And when I would take in the auditor's office, when we had the need to take one position, combine it with another because we had to restructure for whatever reason. I would simply put out there, this is what I'm looking for. And by the end of the day, we'd have ten job descriptions generally in that area that had been prepared by a professional service such as the company we're using and they do a majority of the counties. And I would have gone through before and taken pieces, parts like he was saying of what really applied to what I had, figuring out whether it was a comat one, two, whatever it was. And even though I had written the job description or Amy or we'd come up with whoever together. It was more of an individual thing for the actual director or the elected official because the same person that's doing accounts payable this week because of COVID or whatever might necessarily next week be Amy's backup for budget or for for something else. So not that I'm not saying we don't need yet another job study. I just think that we have tools at our disposal that you know, maybe give it a little time. Let's come up with something else that we could use in-house rather than trying to recreate the wheel.
Yeah. Sheena, could you come up to the podium and talk for a bit? This is how I got started in this. And Sheena has given me a lot of wisdom in that regard as to the problems that she encountered. So if you could kind of go through those a bit.
Okay, sure. Sheena Johnson Court Administrator. So we had a brief phone call with Addie a couple of weeks ago and she supplied a few forms that other counties are using for submission of new positions to these committees. And whether or not the committee is a great plan or not is another thing, but the forms themselves, they weren't very well suited for our purposes. I think they they don't contemplate that people can be paid out of multiple line items. They don't contemplate that we might not be specialized to classify the positions into the, you know, the classifications that Wagner, Irwin and Shealy does. So I found I I went through the process with the three positions that we've talked about. So the two for the problem solving courts and then the assistant director position that we talked about for CASA. So I went through the exercise of all three of those just to see what it would be like. And I think it would take a lot of tweaking, which isn't impossible, but somebody would have to do it on our end to make those forms usable for our people. Is that what you wanted me to talk about?
Yeah, and you know, just some of the things like their forms require a name entry.
What they require what?
A name entry of the person.
Your part. Oh, yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, there. They had the name of the person, which I mean, we're you're funding a position, not a person, right? So there were just some things on there that didn't seem like they would work for you guys in my experience and just filling out the forms that thought would those forms would create more questions than solve problems.
And the thing I saw that would happen by if you had to do these forms, then you're going to have, you're almost going to have to have a person dedicated to that task at, you know, level. So right now we're paying this consultant under twenty thousand dollars. Let's just say it's closer to fifteen or sixteen. And there's no way that we could provide a person to do that right now to do some of it.
Not an existing person.
And no, may have may have to fall back on, you know, the existing people that we have already to do that. And so.
Yeah, I mean, the committee proposal is one thing, but if you have three council members on a committee deciding whether a position goes to the full council, you're giving that council committee the power of the full council, which I don't know would be appropriate. So that's another thing to consider as far as committees are concerned. I mean, you can set this up however you want. I mean, if you just want Wagner and Shealy to do the classification part, you can have them do that. I mean, like Pam was saying, you can come up with job descriptions and then send them over to Wagner and say, hey, what categories is going? And they'll tell you. I mean, I'm sure they can set it up that way, too.
Barb, did you have anything you'd like to add? Please.
Barb Davis, County Coordinator again. Um, Kevin and I were just back there talking a little bit and and they have been tossing the idea around that we probably really need to look for HR person or something. Like he was going to come up here and say, maybe that's where we need to start.
Okay, so this this is a discussion that we need to have between council and commissioners and, you know, I think I I was thinking along those same lines or an outside firm to do that as an HR firm, that would be more specific. So.
We have other areas. It's not just the job descriptions, but other things that come up for HR. And I know I've had a conversation with Amy about things that they're doing in their department and some other things that they would like to do. They do have a position, open position right now. And I don't know if you liberty to talk about that, but they were thinking about maybe personnel individual or to start out, you know, maybe start out small and then maybe grow from there. Not go to like a full blown HR person that has worked out in the corporate world. Because government is totally different than out there.
I can see it really getting out of hand. I mean, it could turn into a huge bureaucracy in itself if we allow what to happen. I mean, there are counties that have eight people in HR and have people that they're paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars, you know, in a target position. So if we decide to go down that route, it's going to be a huge cost and I don't agree with that.
Well, you know, we what we're facing, it's a matter of defining responsibilities. An organization, how many county employees do we have? Four hundred and fifty? What is it, Pam?
Probably more like six hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's over six hundred.
So we have over six hundred employees and we have no personnel coordinator or whatever title you want to give them in this county to address the issues that keep coming up that relate to a personnel coordinator. I don't know that needs to be a top level corporate as John is commenting that even if it was a personnel coordinator at a lesser amount as far as we hear in here the situation where we need somebody to define what a personnel coordinator is. Yeah, yeah, we've got, you know, I mean, we got, you know, we're just struggling with and and that's where I've been for the last two years is struggling with everyone having to assume this. And I don't know that it's not inappropriate for us to consider moving forward with not waiting until budget time for twenty twenty-four. This is appears to be what I consider to be an immediate need that we should be pursuing at this point in time as a potential additional appropriation for meeting this need if there's an agreement that we should move forward with doing that. But it's, you know, it's a struggle I've had for these two years that I keep saying, why are we not doing the process? We had our organizational Irwin tonight state that we're doing a convoluted backwards approach.
They didn't say that I did. They didn't say that I did.
Well, she confirmed, she confirmed that. And so, you know, my suggestion is that we need to bring this to a head and make some decisions and determine whether or not we want to wait until twenty twenty-four or if it's something we want to do now. And, you know, we're we're keep having these requests come before us and we just, you know, bounce around on it. So again, my suggestion is that it's something that we consider doing sooner than later.
Well, I think that that there are other people that need to be involved in this conversation. The commissioners of which one is walking our way. And of course, we have the judiciary and court services. Go ahead, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
John. Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. The age old question, we dealt with, you see the Human Resources Department of the county sitting in this room, got Adam, you had Tiffany, you had Sheena and the three commissioners. I'll tell you right now, I'm not qualified to be human resources. We do with with the best advice we get from our attorneys to make that decision. This county has to take a stand someplace and either get human resources in or we're going to just continue to down the path we're at right now. That's my personal belief. You know, I've struggled with getting the human resources. With that comes a lot of difficulties. Can a human resources or can a commissioner tell an elected official what to do? No, by statute. So there's the age old problem of government. How do you handle that? I don't have the clear answer on that, but human resources is a good opportunity to start and work together. We'll work with you guys, but you set the salaries. We don't. Personnel we end up with by default right now. So from a little guidance from the council and the commissioners, I think we need to sit down and actually figure this out. And it's going to take some hard decisions to make. And there's going to be some people that aren't happy. There's going to be people that are happy. So we need to have this really in-depth discussion to come up with some kind of solution to push us forward because right now we're just making it with six hundred employees.
You're doing a good job of, I mean, taking care of what you've got.
We've we've got great counsel. I mean, we do. I mean, Sheena did it for years. We've got Adam and Tiffany now. And I mean, there's some difficult decisions we've had to make.
Well, this is a growth county. We're at, we're knocking on the door of a hundred and seventy thousand. We're the tenth largest county in the state. And we're growing and busting at the seams and we're not going to get any smaller. The problems are only going to get larger.
I heard you talk about salaries for these people, you know, you start in a hundred and forty thousand people or a hundred and forty thousand dollars per person. You know, I would, I don't know if anybody can quote from the council, what is the total payroll for the county in an annual basis?
I'd have to look it up without quoting it.
A lot.
Yes.
So you're not going to get by with a fifty or sixty thousand. That's going to be a clerk type position. You're going to need to bring an HR or hiring an outside firm. And that would probably be advice to come with an outside firm at first and see if they work out. And try to set this thing up. Have we gone outside for professional services for that? No. Do we need to? Yes.
Well, and I think there's there is a responsibility that we throw on the council on the or council counselor that their job is not to develop. Their job is to say what we've developed is legally appropriate way to do something. And sometimes we throw too much responsibility towards Adam and his staff to develop. And I ran across this with the the what we did on the, you know, working on the the food pantry thing that, you know, I had to develop what it is that I suggested that we do. And then they told me whether or not it was legal. So I don't think we can continue to ask them to be a default human resources department. The human resources department has to develop the program and then throw it to the attorneys and say, is it legal? And hopefully ninety-nine percent of it will be legal if we get a good, get a good human resources. So I I I, you know, I so I I think, you know, everybody's doing what they can, but what they're trying to do is too much of a burden on who we have existing with the number of employees. And somehow I'm suggesting that we need to put together. Well, I don't care what you call on the human resources or human recourse for human resource advisory person or whatever it is. I think it needs to be internal and you're suggesting that we perhaps have it done by a more formal external organization.
I would ask the council, do you have an experience in human resources?
He said that was an option. Doc said it was an option, no, external.
I mean, bring it in external if that's, you know, and I think it it deter, we need to set with the full commissioners and full council and discuss this. And I've figured out executive session, however you want to do it. It doesn't matter to me. We have the handbook that we set guidelines and rules by and we have taken a very active role in that. Sheena started that. We annually review, if not more than that. Adam's taken over that and we try to keep protocols in place, but it's a moving target at all time.
Adam, would it need to be done in executive session? Because there would be some situations that we would need to address.
I'm trying to think off the top of my head, what statute we could use exec session for this, is there a specific enumerated instances when you could do an exec session? I don't I don't think it would. I I'll double check. So this may.
Thinking of certain things that you're dealing with that we don't know about.
And I don't really, yeah, some of the things we talk about are executive session with personnel and we can't talk about that. We won't talk about that in public.
Yeah.
And.
Limit the discussion then.
Well, I guess maybe I was confused with your question. Talking about a meeting, a joint meeting with council. I I don't think it'd be appropriate to speak to specific instances that we've dealt with for a variety of reasons. But if we're talking generically what we deal with, the merits and benefits to having either an in-house position or external, I think we could have that conversation.
My concern would be that somebody that's involved with an existing litigation or whatever could could use these discussions.
Well.
Like that would result, like bring up anything.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're going to talk about John Doe did this to this other person. I mean, we're not, we wouldn't approach. I think what we're really, the conversation would be almost like the salary status is the procedures. When we get a complaint, what do we do? Who has to handle it? Whose hands are on that? The conversation that gets had and is the county not better served with having HR experts to field that? Instead of having to go to Barb first and then to me and Tiffany and then doing exceptions to the handbook and or changes to the handbook and all that. It's.
And and that's much broader than what we've been discussing here this evening, what we've discussed in the past. That would be included in a potential HR position, but what I'm talking about is what Kevin just commented that the the clerk who is in an elected officials department and the clerk who's in the commissioners department have the same functions. Okay, so one wants to add additional responsibilities for that clerk in one particular position. Then I get into the process of whether they're elected office holders position that's managing it or the commissioners, a clerk and the change in responsibilities would be reviewed by a human resources director. Right now that change in responsibility, if it's a new position, simply has to be written and reviewed and suggested whether or not it's a comment or all the different positions. So I'm talking about the process review that I believe a human resources director would be essential in doing it because now we have so many different people who are writing it. And then, you know, where are we sending it? And we send it to Barb and then Barb send it to Irwin and then Irwin says here's where it should be and that process is so convoluted as she indicated that I think we need to have somebody internal doing that now, but in that in the absence of not having that person, I don't think we can not do those things. That's just my personal opinion.
That person is not Barb either.
So John, can I weigh in on this?
Yes, sir.
I think Kevin's right. And it's amazing to me, we had a six hundred employee organization.
Whether you call it government, you call it corporate, call whatever you want to, we've got six hundred people, right? With whatever the payroll is. We, we're missing a point guard at the HR level that can kind of drive some of these things, it seems to me like. As I sit here, my question is, is what's the process to come up with the process almost? And that sounds weird, but we're dancing, we're, we're doing a lot of talking, but we're not getting a lot of traction in where we wanna go. And part of this may be kind of basic because at least to get to a baseline. I don't know what our relationship is with other counties or our interaction with other counties, uh, what their relationship is. But if we know people that have got a process and procedure and, and have done this dance before us. Why can't we get with somebody and say, hey, let's do this? And if it's something that is at least the start of a plan, then that seems to me, that's where we begin. Kind of developing, whether we use consultants or not, we at least, um. Have a, here's what we're thinking type of, right now, we're thinking a lot of different things, right? If we can get that kind of, uh, reined in and make it in a concise, here's what we're thinking. We're not exactly sure where we're going. But we have a, a logic behind. Why we think what we think, and then from there, if we need somebody to help us build it out, do it. But it seems to me like we don't have a huge problem necessarily. We got big ones potentially. That we have, need to get after on probably more sooner than later basis.
Well, I agree. I would like to, like for us consider tonight, uh, moving forward with Wagner, Irwin and Shield. And I would suggest that we, we stay the course right now in that regard and, uh. As we already have a. Sort of a contractual ob- or not an obligation, but we do have a contract with them right now that needs to be updated. So rather than us throw the baby out with bathwater right now, let's stay the course with them and.
And John, I was not suggesting we, we don't continue that. All I'm saying is what were their, what are our expectations of them on delivery? Of what we need, and it needs to coincide with not what they tell us we need, but what we have developed that, developed that need.
My opinion is they are not the answer. They are. Where we are.
They provide you data.
Right.
Just be a process.
Pam, what do you think?
Um, for years, I, I was the person across the table. From the attorney and the commissioners trying to work through the numerous problems. Uh, is, I have to say, it's been my vote for twenty years. This county needs an HR person. Uh, the amount of responsibility that, that is, is falling. Prior to it being brought to, to the entities that you spoke of, Kevin, there's a level below that. That people who are not trained to do that, myself included. Were making decisions whether it even needed to go to the next level. And sometimes you got it right, sometimes you didn't. And, uh, that has come back around to cause the county problems in the past. So I am a big supporter. Of an HR person for a six hundred and fifty person organization. And I know it's a big step and it will incorporate the job description problem that we're having now. But yes, I have, I have no reason to even doubt that it's needed and has been needed for a long time.
John, you've been sitting back there quiet. What's your thoughts on this?
Who me?
Yeah.
Um, I, I agree with Pam.
Well, that's one of four, I guess.
Um, I didn't realize there were six hundred and fifty people, but that, I mean, like John down there said, that's. It's somewhat rudderless, so I think that's something that's, that's needed. I, it's not exactly a good analysis, but I work at the state of Indiana and they have. Far fewer employees per HR than that. And, um, it's, you know, fraught with problems if you don't have some, some, something.
There's always something.
Yeah, in, 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 uh. Overseeing those issues. So I, I, I agree with Pam.
I mean, it might be worthwhile to bring a firm or contact the firm and bring them in and actually talk to them. I'm real speculating right now.
With what I'm hearing.
I've had HR person.
I think the HR person would work for the county. I mean, any HR. Companies I've seen are basically, they almost have to be a standalone entity within their own right. Because they can't be. Fully under control of the commissioners or fully under control of the council.
So our attorney, for instance.
Most of the stuff ends up in the attorney's laps. Not most of it, all of it. Yeah, there's always something.
I'd like to hear your thoughts, Adam.
I think that. Through my excellent predecessors, the county's been able to navigate this, uh, but I, I think. The county would be best served to have an HR. Entity. I, I don't know the, the best way to do that, but whether it's an in-house or external, I, I think it would serve the county. And specifically, and arguably most importantly, the county employees. The best to have an HR position because there will be times when. And thank goodness this has not happened, but one can hypothesize a situation where I, I am called up first because I'm just a county attorney. And I am told something by an employee about an elected official. Well, what am I supposed to do with that? I represent the elected official, but I have this complaint by an employee, so it, it just makes it very messy. There is obviously a concern with what can HR do to an elected official, well, not much, but. Well, what do the employees do? Like who do they go to, to best serve their needs when they're faced with the situation? Either by a superior or a fellow employee.
But we all work for somebody. Uh, we're, we're elected by our constituents. So this HR person, who would he or she work for?
I think that wouldn't that be based on what, what route you took, whether you're gonna hire a private employee for the county?
If it's a private.
Or if you're gonna cons- do hire a consulting firm. I mean.
Yeah, I think that's the first question.
Yeah.
Is because, um. I mean, of the fiscal body or the commissioners, I would lean more towards it falling under the commissioner.
Stay approved contracts, so.
Um, but it, it really, that may be more of a weed question once we get into it. Um, I think it really kind of depend on what route we plan.
There's other counties that are set up and we have good relationships with other counties. I think. Little time, I think we can reach out and maybe report back on. Different structures.
Yeah, the first one is to face this. I mean, there's no need for us to reinvent the wheel. We can look at other counties. We may not wanna look at Hamilton County, but. To see what, what other, other counties have done and then. Take the best of what we see. Okay, we like this part over here that they've done. We like what they've done. We don't like this. And we just craft something that's unique to what, what we need here in Dawson County, and that may be the best route to go.
So you've got that ball?
I'll take it around with it, but we can, but that, that would probably be the best way to do is just doing some comparable county surveys on what they've done, how they've structured it. And then. Want to do a joint meeting.
We've never had one, so we'll craft our own.
Well, and I, I, you know, I think where we get caught up in, in proceeding with something like this is throwing. Uh, five more gallons of the bucket into a gallon, you know, in a four gallon bucket that's already full on the, the staff. Uh, and I know that there are aversions to committees, but I, I'm not suggesting that wouldn't be appropriate. That there be some kind of a really small subcommittee, uh, that could consider doing this. Unless, you know, and remaking, not remaking, but we'll, uh. You know, that it not be all thrown in Adam's lap is what I'm saying, that this is a major. And I, I'm also suggesting we not wait till twenty twenty four to begin the process of this review that. It sounds like there is an immediate need that we need, need to look at. And if the commissioners have suggestions of who might be involved in this small subcommittee. Uh, to at least get us to a point where we're in some, I think it ought to be a commissioner and a counselor or two.
It sounds to me like you guys are discussing two different functions.
Can you speak up to the mic?
It sounds to me like you're discussing kind of two different HR functions. You're talking about somebody who would troubleshoot the problems that happen literally every day. And you're also talking about more of an administrative role that somebody would take as far as the job descriptions and the classifications and. Maybe participating in some kind of salary situation, which means that you're kind of talking about a commissioner function and a council function. So I don't know if you wanna keep those separate or if you're trying to put those together.
Yeah, and that may answer that question too. I mean, because it is, there is a multiple discussion here. Will you, salary maintenance part of it, but also the personnel part of it, and perhaps it is. The salaries, the council, and then the personnel issues under commissioners. I mean, we get.
No committees. The commissioners, are they open to?
I'm just one of three. You'd have to speak to the other two. I'll leave it at that.
The way we do that is like we did with the roads where we had a combination. Of the full council and the full commissioners having a discussion about this. And that, we made a lot of strides on the, the roads. So I would suggest that we establish a special meeting. Like we did with the roads where we have the full council and the full commissioners to have. A further discussion about this to see where the ten. Stand on it. If there's no objections to that, I would suggest that be the next move.
It'd be nice to set a date to when we'd have this completed by. Maybe we can all shoot for it.
That would be my suggestion. I would ask.
Maybe the end of June, maybe July.
It would give us time, me and Tiffany, to. Look at some other counties, because otherwise, if we have a meeting next month, we may not, it may just be a lot more best where we kind of talk around the problem without having. An idea or solution to inhibit it for, so at June.
Sixty, ninety days, some of that.
Yeah, just to really kind of dive into it, kind of stick it, these, these counties do it this way and.
And that would be good, you know, that if we had something. Going into the twenty-four budget cycle. So that we would have that in place for twenty-four.
First step is, I think what Adam just, I would just suggest, what Ron just suggested, maybe that, that joint meeting. Haven, that's the takeaway here by view is what do we wanna do as collective group? And then from there, we move forward.
Yeah, I, I would make that as a motion that we would suggest that there be this joint meeting.
If there's a position created, that's to commission, correct?
I think the structure of this, I, you know, if Adam looks at some of this structure, I think he could share that with the council and commissioners. As far as the structure, how they wanna set it up, maybe a couple, three different scenarios and see which one fits our, which model would fit our needs.
Why don't we just leave it at that and then send out a meeting?
Oh, we could talk about this till.
Yeah.
Midnight.
Yeah, I, I think it, it would probably best to have some firm ideas and options on where to go for that. Meeting be productive, I have a feeling, so.
Now, if you get three different models, two different models of how they need to set it up, reporting just a. Basically a structure. And we can look at it and we can make adjustments.
Let's get just a starting point.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta start somewhere if you're gonna do something, you know, financial side and.
We had to put that in the form of motion.
Um, I don't think we need to go that far. I mean, what we're really talking about is, uh. It sounds like just like a consensus for me to do some research and then we can just advertise a joint meeting sometime in. June. That works for you guys. We can do June. And present it then. Or earlier, but probably June.
Be a good shoot. So if we have a consensus for a June meeting. Commissioners.
Or consensus for when it is that Adam gets it done, hopefully before June.
Yeah, we'll shoot for sixty days and then.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment right now. Motion by unanimous group, second by unanimous group. Can you drag this out? I don't. For good reason.